Hi there.
Hi, how are you?
I'm okay, how are you?
I'm good.
I have a question for you.
Okay.
This lot line revision. I didn't see the documentation in the materials we got. It looks like, my impression is, they're moving that no build area over to Woodsey Mac. Is that what's going on?
Yes, 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 yes.
Well.
And it, documents came yesterday. We don't have the map that necessarily says that yet. I think that's coming.
Okay.
But that's been pretty new and that was in the documentation that was sent.
That's their solution to Matt's concern about accessibility? To glue it onto another property? That, well, it makes some sense, I guess. That's protective area. Woodsy Mac.
I know, I had an aha moment with that.
Okay. Now, my other question is about this noise ordinance thing. I don't understand what it means to say that one part of the law trumps another.
That's what Nick was pointing out. That's what Nick was pointing out, that they basically did away with that part.
Well, you can't do that. You, you have to, you have to, you have to cancel the part that you no longer consider to be in effect.
I know. Aren't we glad we're not the CEO? I'm just kidding. I know, I know. I know.
Doesn't solve our problem very effectively.
Hi, Nick.
Hi, Nick. This is off the record, Nick. We're not in session yet. Okay. Well, I, you know, I at least scanned through all of that flood of documents that we got in the last two days.
I know, I've been very busy, Judy.
Did we get an answer from Matt to their answer to him?
Matt will be here tonight. He's supposed to be logging on, so hopefully.
Good.
Yeah. And hopefully that'll... I think after this, we'll do a meeting with John and us, just so you guys can hash out any questions and then we can solidify. I talked to him on the phone today.
Great.
Yeah.
But I agree with you, Judy. It seems like a sloppy way of doing it. I don't understand why they did it that way.
So they have simply declared that one of them is null and the other controls?
Right. Exactly.
Huh. So which one is controlling? The decibel level?
No.
No, the, the noise ordinance.
Yeah, but are people allowed to have outside amplified music or not?
I think the way you read it, still, no. Well, it depends. It can't go outside the property line.
No, that's, that's a different statement. If that's the answer, that, that I can understand.
But the rest of it's, the rest of it's pretty subjective, though. That's a whole other issue.
Yeah.
Hi, James. Hi, Stuart.
Hi, Katie.
Connor.
Hello.
Hello. Good evening, everybody.
Are we still allowed to meet on Zoom after this one?
Um, that's up in the air. We'll talk about that.
Okay. I won't get ahead of the agenda. Connor, we can actually see you.
They ended the executive order. They did not renew it. But we are technically in a state of emergency because of polio, so... Judy, I'm doing what I can with love.
As you always do. As we always do.
Hi, Connor. Nice to see your face.
Yeah. Now, if we could see Brian's, we'd really be ahead of the game. I love his hat.
Yeah, if we go to hybrid meetings, we will need a forum here at the building, which will probably be sooner rather than later.
Hi, Stuart.
Is that Judy? Hi, Judy.
Yeah.
Is Peter joining?
He is, I just, he hasn't popped on yet. I didn't hear anything different, did you?
Maybe you give him a buzz or a text, because he's usually on at the beginning.
Okay.
Here he comes. Hi, Peter.
I just want to say I'm magic, okay? Hi, Peter.
Hi, Melissa. Okay. Let's see, there's Stuart, hi Stuart. There is Judy. Connor's there, so we have a forum.
We have a forum.
And Brian, okay. Okay. So let me get this open. All right. It is 6:30. I would like to call to order the regular meeting of the Woodstock Planning Board for September 15th, 2022. And this is held via Zoom. And do you have any updates to the agenda, Melissa?
I do not.
Okay, so we have the minutes from September 1st. I'd like to hear a motion to approve the minutes as is.
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Okay, aye.
Thank you.
Okay, under communications and announcements, we have an email from Jay Paulson regarding the Verizon 5G application, an email from Ken Panzer regarding some upcoming events, which I had in front of me, but there's two events coming up. We have the email from New York Shipoh regarding the Fam Acres. We have the survey results from the Woodstock Housing Committee, which is quite a good read. We have the response to the MDRA memo, which we will be doing for Fam Acres next. We have an email from Nick Henderson regarding the outdoor music and zoning, which is an interesting thing. He realized that the new, the new law obviates the old law, and that's interesting. I know Connor has some stuff on that. And then we have an email from K Smith and Residence on Eastern Lane regarding the Woodsey Mac LLC logging permit. And we have an email from Jay Capello and Jackowitz and Bluebush LLP regarding the Fam Acres. So we have tonight two public hearings.
No, just one.
Excuse me?
Just one public hearing.
Okay. Yes, one public hearing. One sketch plan review. So, the first one is Woodsey Mac LLC SUP 22-0277A. And this is a public hearing for a special use permit application for a timber harvest in the R3 zoning district located at 70 Eastern Lane and Blues Quarry in Woodstock. And the rep is Anthony De Vescovo. So I'd like to entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Okay. So Anthony, would you be so kind as to tell the planning board and the public what it is you're proposing to do? You're at the end of Eastern Lane.
Sure, thank you. So, this property has been under forest management since 1982. I've been involved with it ever since. I was a much younger man when I wrote the forestry plan. And I'm, I'm still involved with the property. It's changed hands a few times, but I'm, Alex Easton, Alex and Annabelle Easton were the ones who hired me years ago. And we did a timber harvest there in 1983. Then he entered in, they entered into the forest tax law, Section 480A here in New York State for forest management long-term. And then in 1998, I don't know if you guys recall, but Hurricane Floyd blew through the Woodstock area, knocking down many, many trees. And we had a cleanup harvest after that, which took place around 99, 2000. And after that, you know, everything was done, cleaned up properly. And the forest that's there now is largely a result of these management activities that, you know, I was a part of and it took place over the years. And like I said, the property changed hands a few times. And now the McCormacks have it and they wanted to continue in 480A. And actually, they added to the original acreage. They bought more land and added it to 480A because they have a vision for the property to keep it as a forested section of woods, section of land. And by adding to it, that's less land that's available for other uses such as building and subdivision. So we feel that this is a really positive thing for this property and continuing with the forest management. And New York State DEC is the ones that we report to on all of this. We had to get approval from them for the, the cutting, that this was something good for the forest. They gave the approvals. That was included in the original packet I sent in. And so now trees are marked and measured and everything's laid out. And we're basically, we have a logger who we, has made an offer that we want to accept and contract with him to do the work. So that brings us to this point now.
Okay. All right. Before we get comments from the public, I'd just like to point out that the additional land we're talking about, I guess, is the 27 acres that's coming from the fam.
No, 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 that's not yet. No, Peter.
Okay.
There's, there's two parcels involved and, and 2000, this was only one parcel. And then the McCormacks actually bought the next parcel. So the one you're talking about is in the works, but it's not yet. So no, 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 not yet.
All right.
You're two, you're two ahead of the game, Peter. You read my emails.
All right. So then, members of the public have questions for the applicant? As I know that we did get a letter from K Smith and Residence, so if they're there, please go ahead.
Well, I'll start. My name is Sarah Kay. I live at 53 Eastern Lane, which is one of the contiguous properties. I want to just note to begin that the first we heard of any of this was in the notice of public hearing we received from you. So had we received even a Dear Neighbor letter or any effort to explain anything, it's possible that we could have worked out and gotten our questions answered. But instead, we're left to three-minute conversations in a public hearing to try to get some information about a project that has the potential to be incredibly disruptive. So for that reason, the neighbors came together and are requesting that you put some reasonable time, place, and manner. Can, is, am I not being heard? I'm seeing somebody had an audio issue.
Yes, I hear you.
Okay, somebody put in, okay, great. So we're asking for some reasonable limitations to be placed on this license. We appreciate the need to maintain the forests. Nobody has an issue with that. And we understand there may be some inconvenience to the property owner surrounding. Again, people are quite reasonable. But, but under the relevant state laws and under the Woodstock town rules, special permits have to take into account the health and safety and well-being of the neighbors as well as the needs of the property owner. So we're asking for some reasonable restrictions. My neighbor Kimberly, I think, did a very nice job in her notes, sort of laying out the very residential character of the neighborhood, the fact that there are many people who work from home and have small kids and stroll up and down what is a very small country lane. None of us bargained for having a commercial logging business operating across the street. The, based on the drawings that we have, and this is all we really have to go on, the so-called staging area, which is where I assume most of the sort of noise and activities will be coming from, could not be in a more obnoxious place because it is directly across the street from at least four neighbors and will be a stone's throw from at least two, including one couple who just had a baby last week. I don't understand why the staging area is being placed where it's being proposed to be placed. There's a very large lot that could be much further away from people, but they've chosen to put it in a place maybe that's more convenient for them, but is going to generate noise and disruption to those of us who have to live here. So what we'd like is to have a limitation on the hours of work. Seven to seven is a lot to ask people to put up with. We'd like to understand what the duration of the work will be. Is this a two-day project? Is this a two-month project? Is this a two-year project? We have no idea. And we'd like some consideration of moving the most, let's just say irritating aspects of the enterprise, namely the staging area. There's a, a temporary bridge that looks like it will be literally right next to the home at number 66, which doesn't actually even appear on the map that was included in the packet. I'm told it didn't have to be, but there's a house literally right at the property line where that temporary bridge is going to be. The homeowners.
That's not really accurate what you're saying. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but.
Well, look, I mean, I'm going from your map. No one discussed this with anyone. So I'm looking at your map and I'm looking at the circle where the temporary bridge is, and it's right next to number 66.
Yeah, well, that, you know, that site plan was just to, so that we can get to this point.
Okay, so we're at this point and I'm asking you, where's the bridge going to be?
So the bridge is, I did some measurements online today. And the closest house is not less than 328 feet from where the portable bridge would be in the woods, where it's pretty much out of sight of sightline visibility from anybody's house.
So their house is up on a hill? And from what I can see, you're putting it in, they're going to be looking right down on it.
No, they're not, because the driveway that comes in the McCormick, the McCormick property, it would be on the east side of the lane, the driveway that comes in to the McCormick's house. And the setback is supposed to be, preferred to be 100 feet, and it will be 100 feet from the boundary line. But in fact, it would be about 170 feet from Jenkins' house where the staging area would be. So it's not.
Okay, I'm not talking about his house. I'm talking about Mike Schleifer and Christian Kessler's house at number 66.
Yeah, and from that house, it'll also be, that will be 285 feet from that house.
This is Brian from the planning board. Anthony, did I hear you correctly? So that distance is approximately the length of a football field? Did I understand that correctly?
Yes, 285 feet from the next closest house on an aerial imagery. I don't know the names of the people who live in each house, so I'm sorry.
Okay, and the staging area, which looks like it's directly across the street from my property, and it looks like it's going to be quite visible to at least four properties that are contiguous.
Well, right now, if we were to go stand on where we want to have the staging area with the leaves on the trees, I'm sure you wouldn't be able to see it. In the winter with leaves off, yes, you'd probably be able to see it then.
Right, and the noise?
Well, the noise is part of the, what's involved in this kind of project. You can't not.
Right, so why are you citing it near neighbors? Move it up and away in the middle of the property somewhere where people don't have to deal with it.
We, there's no option to go anyplace else because you have to go to a place where a log truck can enter the property and load the logs to take them away. There's no other place on the whole property that we can do that.
I find that hard to believe, given that they built a house there and there's a big empty space behind that house.
We can't be taking logging trucks right up their driveway past their house.
Okay, but you can take it right past our house.
No, they're on their own property with the, with the proper setbacks, so that, that's how it's, we're calling for.
Well, I'm suggesting that it's a really obnoxious placement of a really high-intensity activity in a residential neighborhood, and it could be moved elsewhere.
Well, it really.
Or it should be moved. It may be, maybe it will be more expensive or maybe it will be less convenient. But I find it hard to believe there is nowhere else on this giant piece of property that you could put it except directly across the street from four people, four homes.
Well, I know you find it hard to believe, but we've done the research on it. We, we really didn't want to put it there. We had it there two other times over the years, as I mentioned. There were no mishaps. It got done and taken care of. And it's not like it's going to be a permanent operation.
Well, with all due, with, with all due respect, with all due respect, sir. I am so sorry, but first of all, when the McCormicks built their house, they knocked out the power lines to other people's homes. Okay, with the logging, with, with the, well, with the logging truck and those lines are still less than 12 feet high. So I don't know how you're going to get big giant logging trucks in there anyway. So that's first of all. Second of all, the fact that it may have been there in 1990 or 1983, the equipment was very different. People were using smaller vehicles and smaller trucks. You're talking about, I assume, bringing in very, very large pieces of equipment down a residential country road.
The same kind of equipment that was brought there other times.
Other, other times, yes, and they took out the power lines.
The loggers never took out the power lines. So don't mix up, they're building their house and we're involved with the logging. Two different items.
Okay, I, I don't know, I don't know who took out the power lines, but someone in the context of doing work on that property brought in heavy equipment that took out the power lines. And you are talking about bringing in heavy equipment that I imagine could also bring out the power lines, which are hanging pretty low. So the point is, you're asking everyone in the neighborhood to put up with an industrial, you know, essentially a commercial industrial activity. And how long will this go on for, by the way?
First of all, we're looking to do an activity that's permitted within the town. The McCormicks pay taxes. They have rights in their town, just like you do. So just keep that in mind.
Of course they do.
As far as how long it would take, logging operations, if they're conducted properly, has to take the weather into account. So we can't actually tell you exactly how long it's going to take because we don't want to go in there when the ground is wet and soft. We don't want to make muddy conditions in there. So we're looking for either dry, like it was this summer, or frozen conditions, like we would hope it would be in the wintertime. But the contract duration that we're, we want to give the logger goes until the end of 2023. And that's not to say this.
Anthony, let me ask you a question. How many truckloads of logs are coming out? Or how many trees are being cut?
Yeah, the math on the truckloads is probably somewhere between 40 and 50 truckloads.
Oh my God, you're kidding. Going right by residential homes with little kids and dogs and on a little skinny country road, where, by the way, my, my neighbor and friend Kimberly Smith had her property damaged by perhaps not the logger, but another piece of giant equipment that was going up to the McCormick's house to build their home or take down logs or whatever. It's a really small place. So let me ask you, 40 or 50 logs, a truck's worth of logs, take how long to cut down, prepare, and remove? How many days of work?
That would probably be done over, excuse me, one second. Let me do the math.
While he's doing that, let me just bring up some possibilities for Sarah to deal with. We, the planning board can restrict the time of operation, for one thing. So we can restrict the hours the chainsaws are running. And normally, we restrict the time that logging trucks can run. So those are all things we can put into the agreement as to the hours of operation and the times that the trucks can roll. So we, we can certainly make it so they don't go up and down the road at a time that, you know, people are commuting or kids are getting off of buses and whatnot like that.
So that's great, but I'm still curious about how many days of work this is.
Right, so I would estimate it's about 60 to 65 days of work. And.
So that's two, over two months worth of work, day in and day out.
It's not day in and day out. There's no working, I don't think you allow it on weekends, unless I'm incorrect on that.
All right, then it's more than two months if it's 60 days, right? If you're not including weekends.
Right, and not all the work is done on the staging area. They're going to be out in the woods doing a lot of the work that's done quite a distance from anybody's house.
Well, look, Anthony, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Look, the fact that you're just saying it can't be anywhere else because I say it can't be anywhere else, I'm sorry. I don't find that persuasive.
Peter, I have a question.
Go ahead, Judy.
If I can show the map, it seems to me, Anthony, that you don't have any other roads that you can use. Am I right about that?
That's correct. Chicken Joe Road has such a sharp turn with a rock wall on one side of it that no, no big truck can get in there.
Okay, this is the property.
Yes.
I just want to remind the planning board, this is done through the DEC. They have all the proper paperwork. This is a 480A. They've been doing it, I mean, they have the plan for years. So I just, just, I just wanted to, you know, I know you guys look at the stuff and then we're here, but they, they have been granted permission through.
Yeah, but they, but there's, there are questions about how it gets done. And the fact of the matter is, they're now talking about 60 days of giant trucks and sawing and disruption that all the neighbors are expected to just accept.
Over how many, over two years, correct?
No.
One.
The, the contract is to allow time so that when there's inclement weather, there's times when you can't work.
Right.
That's the reason for the contract being, there's, in logging, there's typically breakdowns. It's not like every single day, everybody's going to be out there all day long. It doesn't work that way.
So two people have their hands up, Melissa. I don't know if you. So two people have their hands up. Melissa, I don't know if you see that.
I know, but okay. Sarah, I'm gonna, you're, I, I gave you as much time as I can. We're gonna have to move on, so I see Jennifer Maharry. Just unmute yourself and try to keep it to three minutes. We have to move on. We have other cases. Unmute yourself.
Adam, you gotta hit, you gotta unmute Adam. It's down at the bottom of the screen.
Hold down the spacebar.
We're good. Hello, I'm Adam Snyder, eighty Eastern, Jennifer Maharry, Elliot Snyder, eighty Eastern. We'll make this quick.
Thank you.
Anthony, you raise a very good point that, that the McCormick's are taxpayers. There are twelve other houses on the street that are also taxpayers, so if you're talking about that argument, I think this is a good conversation for us to have. The staging area is very close to, is, would be right by our property, so that's also a concern for us. The map does not, that we're looking at, does not really look like the map. I, I appreciate that you took a measurement online. Come on down, come take a look at it. I mean, if you're going to do this job, come, I'll walk the property with you. The planning board, we invite you to take a look. The curve on Eastern Lane looks nothing like that. It's, it's a dead man's curve. It's blind. It's a single lane. That's where every one of us walk. Eighty days is, the power lines, we have trucks that cannot deliver because they take one look at those power lines and they don't come through. So this is something that we know. We live there. We live at the end of Eastern Lane, so the power lines are very much an issue. And we've experienced that where I've had to go get guys to deliver it on smaller trucks and stuff because big trucks can't get through our, those are our power lines, and big trucks have come before and said, we're not going in there. Children, obviously, is a big issue for us. Also, a lot has changed since nineteen eighty-three. There are more people on the street. And the nature of this property, the nature, the nature of this property, thank you, Anthony, the nature of this property itself has changed. In eighty-three, it was a back forty, or a back eighty-nine, or a back whatever you're talking about. It's the Eastern Farm Property. Now, it's, it's a, it's a residential property. They have a house there now.
I beg to differ. In two thousand and one, all these houses were there, and the loggers.
Their, the McCormick's house wasn't there in two thousand and one.
No, but all the other houses on.
The nature of this property was more like a back forty. It's now.
Eastern Lane is, Eastern Lane's the same now, then, is it, it's not changed. It has the same, has the same width that it had then.
Not the property, not the property in question, Anthony. It's a different kind of property. The spirit of the property.
Because you're there, it's different.
No, the spirit of the property at the, that where they're talking about harvesting. These people are kind of trying to play it both ways. It's a residential piece of property to them. They've got a huge mansion up there, but they want to log it for tax purposes. That's their right. That's cool.
That's not even, that's not even true.
It's also our right as the, as the other twelve taxpaying families to strenuously thank the planning board for looking at this. And let's do this in a reasonable way that allows them their rights. They have rights, please, and the forest needs stuff too, we know that. But look at what we're saying here. Come on down. I'll make you a cup of coffee, please. Check it out.
I've been there for forty years. I've been there.
Okay.
Thank you. So can I say something?
Sure, Gavna.
First of all, my partner has been living here since nineteen eighty-four or eighty-five, and it's never been done that way. It's been done to the back way. There is another like way, way in the back. And it was done that way all these years, even when there's no, there was less people living here. Why can it be, why does it have to be here where it's so crowded, where we all live?
That was the same place that we took it out two other times. I have, I even had a permit from the town of Woodstock in two thousand and one.
The same place that it's going to be now. Okay, sorry.
Can I, can I ask a question?
Go ahead, Sarah.
Yes, thank you. I'm just wondering, there are skid roads that exist on that property. Is that correct, Anthony?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, and so there are, it looks like there are three skid roads. Is that correct?
Main skid roads.
Yes, and they go around the property and then one goes down the middle. Is that, am I seeing that correctly?
Yeah, yeah.
So is there a reason why what the staging operation couldn't be located off of one of those skid roads?
You would have to make a road that a truck can travel all the way into the property. That would be.
Well, let me ask you, okay, why not? Ask you, let me ask you this. If some of the work that needed to be done, because I don't know the exact process, you're taking trees down and you have to move the logs down. Is it possible to move them to one spot and gather them and then move them again to a spot in the front so that maybe it wouldn't be as much at one time? In other words, it wouldn't be as, you might have to run a smaller truck up and back. Is there a way to, to sort of limit that? We're concerned that the staging area is going to be very noisy and also dangerous. And so what we're concerned about is, are both of those things. And so what we're hoping is that there might be a modification, some way to move it back a bit. I understand large trucks have to get down there, but the large truck has to get up the skid road, right? I mean.
No, the machines that are made for moving timber and logs in the woods are off-road machines with big tires. They're skitters and forwarders. And a log truck is a road truck that has to be able to travel down the highway. You can't just take a highway truck and drive it through woods where it's rough and there's stumps and there's, you know, soft dirt. It doesn't work that way. But as to what you just said, the only option that we would have is if we were to be able to go up McCormick's driveway over that little stream that the culverts, they have two culvert pipes there.
Yeah.
If they were able to improve that stream crossing, would say a bigger culvert and more stone, then they could go down in the woods further.
Okay, that, you know, that would actually be very helpful. I, I know that you, that the, the plans call for putting in a temporary bridge. But it may be if you could, if they could firm that up and just go in a little bit further. You know, our guess is that for the McCormick's, and again, you know, I think the fact that they're trying to take care of the forest is great. They're doing everybody a service, but I, I also know that they live in Long Island, and my guess is that they'll be able to be in Long Island while we'll be kind of having to deal with most of the the forestry noise and disturbance. So, and that's an assumption on my part.
Yeah, I don't know the answer to that.
I know, I know. I'm not being cynical, but if there were a way to do that, I think that would, that you know, would be very helpful as a place for us to start if we could move it back a bit and possibly cut the hours to, so that, you know, we're not worried. We understand that you are dependent on the weather. We've had trees taken down on our property. I know they.
Tara, I'm going to cut you off because I got to move to Kimberly. She patiently raises her hand. Thank you. Kimberly, it's you.
Yeah, a very quick point, which kind of piggybacks off what Tara is saying. Anthony keeps using the word driveway, just to clarify for the board who may not have been to the property. The driveway is an extension of the town road. So other than this area across the stream, it is a road that can handle highway vehicles. So it seems that if construction has to be done for a quote-unquote temporary bridge, then it, it would be just as easy to shore up the area over the stream, which would alleviate most of these problems and allow the big, the bigger equipment and the materials and the things that we're worried from a life and safety and health risk away from the resident, other residences and towards closer to the McCormick's residence, but also kind of in a more neutral area that's not as directly impactful on so many people.
Okay, board members, do any board members have any input on this as to how you feel should proceed?
I do, Peter. Thank you. So I did the site visit on this, so this is Brian Normal, and and I haven't met Ms. Kay before, but I echo her concerns and I echo everybody's concerns that have been expressed in this public hearing. When I went up there, I immediately thought, how the hell are they going to do a tree harvest up here? Given the properties, the topography, and the residential community that's embedded in that forest. And, and I went, and I, it took me about a half hour to find the one marked tree that we were told that there were markings out there with a orange tape on. And so I was thinking to myself, I know that there's a relationship with the D A C, and I know they've done this in the past. But it's been a generation since this has happened. And a lot has happened since two thousand and one. And I just personally, I don't see how they can accomplish what they accomplished in the past given what is there now in terms of residential housing and neighbors that has been eloquently expressed here. And also, you know, I, and I'm not learning on this, but there's a difference between tree harvesting and forests, you know, management. And with climate change and everything that's going on, these are the things that I think about. So in my opinion, this needs to be revisited and rethought. And I have to say, if I had a house there, I mean, I know what logging trucks are. I know what those, I know what those roads are there. And it's, I can't imagine this happening in a, in a reasonable way. I wouldn't want it next to my house, so.
John had his hand up. John?
A lot has changed in the last forty, fifty years. And I think a revisitation of the way in which these trucks are going to be allowed to utilize this property is a necessity at this point. I do not think, since we do not have the conditions that we had when this property first entered the management program. I think that we need to really visit this, revisit the entire process. This is not nineteen eighty-three or nineteen eighty-one again.
There are all these houses there.
He won, and it's a vastly different township.
In two thousand and one, Eastern Lane was not that different than it is right now. I, I would like to know how it's different. It's the same width. It has the same turns. Nothing has changed on it. We were warned last time that there was school kids and certain hours not to use the road because of school buses. And, and we made it work, and there was no mishaps or anything. You have, I don't know if you have it in your files. I still have it in my files from two thousand and one, when the Woodstock Planning Board approved of all this. Derek Treyhand was on the board then. And I've been back and forth up and down that road many times over the years. I don't see the huge difference. I'm sorry. I'm not trying.
Here's the situation. The planning board has approved logging permits over the years, several of them, many of them, that I've seen them all. And they were all, almost always far away from houses and from, and from places that are like on Eastern Lane. I mean, we just did one out at the Sportsman's Club, and it was nothing near it. This has definitely got a lot of folks living right next to it on a tiny road. And I agree with the other board members. I think we need to revisit this site and come up with a plan from the planning board. Because it, it is definitely very close to a small neighborhood with one little road. So.
That's a good question, Peter.
Yes.
I'm looking at the map, which I can share, and I don't understand where the McCormick's driveway even is. I don't see anything marked as a road. If I bring this up, this is Eastern Lane. And I can see all those houses, and this is the McCormick's house. That's the end of Eastern Lane. Where does the driveway come off? Because it's not visible. Is it over here?
No.
I think on newer imagery, you might be able to see it because I went on the Ulster County.
This is twenty twenty-one photograph. I think, let me make sure.
I don't think so, because I was.
These are twenty twenty-one flyovers, these images.
It, it's visible on my computer. I don't understand why I can't see it there.
Well, I'm not looking at the parcel viewer. I'm looking at the state maps that come in. They fly over. It looks like this might be the driveway right here.
Yeah, I think so.
You're getting part of it. Part of the problem is that the deep orange line showing Eastern Lane makes it stand out. But it basically keeps going north and then curves to the.
This does?
Yeah, towards the house.
Okay, so it kind of goes like that?
Correct.
Yeah.
So they would still have to negotiate the road, but then if you're right about it, they could stage it further into the woods. Is that the, the argument?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, that would certainly help. Okay, so we have to move on. We have other cases here. What we're going to do, Melissa, is we're going to go out and take another look and see if we can come up with a plan. And when we do that, I would hope that we can meet with some of the neighbors at the time in the field. I mean, you know, the man certainly correctly has, you know, logging permits are permitted in this town. But it is the planning board's responsibility to make sure health, safety, and welfare is taken into account. And in this case, I think we need to take a closer look.
I'd be happy to go out there with you when you decide to do that.
So we'll adjourn this for now to the call of the chair, and we will take a closer look. So thank you, everybody, for your input.
Sorry, can I just ask a clarifying question? Will, will there be another public hearing?
It's to the chair, it's to the call of the chair, yes.
Okay, thank you.
The board's going to go out with a couple of members and members of your team, if you want to join us. And we'll take a good look and see what we can come up with. Okay?
Feel free to contact me or email me, and I will let you know. Notices don't go out for these because they, this is technically the date. But it will be posted on the agenda as it always is, and you can call me or email me anytime. Thank you.
Okay, thank you all.
Peter?
Okay, under, I'm sorry, so we, we're not going to close.
That's Stuart.
Peter, yes.
Yes, I would just make a suggestion that you entertain a motion to adjourn the public hearing to the call of the chair so that the planning board can weigh in on it. I, I don't expect there'll be opposition, but from my view, it's a good, good idea, and it gives the public an opportunity to come back to the continued public hearing as and when. If there's going to be a revised plan, we'll have it, and then they can comment on the revised plan as well.
I think that was his intent, but he didn't ask for a motion.
Right, so I'm suggesting, I'm moving to support the adjournment of the public hearing to the call of the chair.
So move. On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Stuart. Thank you very much. Okay, folks, so we have next under the sketch plan review, we have Fam Acres LLC, which is U B K's twenty-one dash one-two-two-six and a wetlands and water course permit number twenty-one dash zero-four-five. And this is the presentation of the memorandum number three by M D R A Associates and the response by the applicant of a subdivision and lot line revision, including wetlands and water course permit applications for a hundred and forty-seven acre lot into twelve lots in the R three zoning district located at eighteen eighty-three Glasgow Turnpike in Woodstock. And we have quite a few reps here tonight with Melissa Meyer, Jonah Messis, Barry Medenbok, Medenbok and Eggers, Eric Glad of Cuddy and Fetter, Brad Willoughby Shokin Architecture, and Fred Meyer of McBane Associates. So what I want to do first is to go over the response from Fam to Matt's memo. So I want to just go through the list of it. And step by step. So the proposed lots have been changed from fourteen to twelve, which includes the existing house that's there. And and the proposed new building lots, there's one no build parcel. And it says to please note that lot twelve designated as a no build will be restricted from any future development. The application, it closes an application for a lot line revision application to transfer that twenty-seven acres to the one we just spoke of on Eastern Lane. So to the Woody Mack property. And so that's step one. The next one is on the secret, the. The next one is on the secret, the uh, the applicant has agreed to have the planning board be the lead agency for secret review. And I think that's, we agree with that. The next step.
I just want to know, Peter, I know Matt had stressed, we had done the lead agency paperwork. We had received notices. We had no contest for that. Just, so it's on record. Thank you. Continue.
So Peter, if I may just jump in, so when you're going through this list and you have the items that you're reporting on, if there are additional comments that I have. To add to what you're saying in those particular areas, would you like me to um, come in and say what they are or wait until the end and, and walk through my memorandum again? Because, because we have some additional comments to some of the things you've made uh, that you're making right now. And of course, we haven't done a complete review of all the recently submitted material. So however, however the planning board wants to handle it, I'm, I'm open for that.
Yeah, Matt, I think we're just, this is one more second. We'll just go through their responses and then have you uh, go over and make sure we didn't miss anything.
Okay.
I, I just want to say to everybody that's in the public end of the planning board and to the applicants that um. This is the, the biggest major sub or the only major subdivision that the planning board's done in many, many, many years. And it's a very environmentally sensitive area and the applicants have done an excellent job. Of taking into account the environment and mitigating as much as possible disruption to the area. They've done an excellent job. The main point under this conservation area that I want to bring up and we uh, I'm sure we're going to have to go through this under legal discussion. But the conservation areas include. Areas that are under the protection of the town of Woodstock, wetlands and water courses and there's buffers. Those areas are managed by Woodstock. They're under the town code and under the enforcement of the town. The areas that they want to have the conservation easement that is not part of the Woodstock uh. Areas that are protected are wonderful. They have a great conservation of um, description, which is basically mirrors the Woodstock Wetlands and Water Course law. In what can be done and what not can be done. The difference is they've grouped the Woodstock Wetlands and protected areas into their conservation area. And those are different areas because in the Woodstock area, it, as I said, it is protected by Woodstock. And it is um, under the, the laws of Woodstock. The conservation area they're picking, they're showing at the end, they say it's by the laws of the state. Well, those are two different things. And I don't see how you can include them in one conservation area. Because those Woodstock Wetlands and Water Courses. Are by law or under the control of the town of Woodstock. The conservation areas they want to create is wonderful and the codes and that and everything is wonderful, but the town doesn't have any control over that. So um, that's my main point to say that those two areas have to be separated.
Peter, can I just comment on that?
Sure.
Um, this Barry Medenbok speaking. I, I, I believe that both comply. I mean, the, the, the town's regulations are there. And they apply to all of the applicable areas under the town regulation. And then this would be another layer. Of protection, you know, that, that we'd have, you know, more protection. So it's not like we're taken away from the town. And, and maybe we can get some legal advice on this, but I believe that's like a double protection. As opposed to, we're not taking away from the town. We're adding to it. We're, we're putting another li- layer on top of it.
But in your map, you clearly show what is the Woodstock Wetlands and Water Course areas. Those areas are controlled by the town of Woodstock. So the town of Woodstock can come in there and has the legal right to uh, say what can be done and what not can be done. On the conservation areas that you're including, that's not under the control of the town of Woodstock.
Right.
If, if somebody does something in those conservation areas, town of Woodstock has no control over that. What they do in the lands that are under the town control. There's a big difference, I think. And I agree, we probably need some legal advice on that, but that's the big distinction.
I mean, I mean, we're, we're quite well in the structure, however you think is necessary. I, I thought the way we were doing is like a double protection.
I, I wish to ask a question, Peter.
Sure, Julie.
It seems to me it's the kind of, those are the kinds of questions Matt probably is prepared to answer or could, or John Lyons could. So I don't think it requires a lot of discussion. It's a matter of law or a matter of planning. Um, I do want to say, however, you mentioned conservation easement and I want to make clear. A conservation easement is a specific thing. They may or may not do that, but that's not what they're talking about. They're talking about a conservation area. Which could be a conservation easement, but there could be other ways of managing it. And I just, people get confused. I have gotten confused. So I want to be sure that we're talking about the same thing. It is not at the moment being proposed as conservation easement because then it would take other kinds of legal. Processes. It's a conservation area and the question of how it's going to be managed is definitely one that needs to be further pursued. Thank you.
Yep. Okay, um, well.
Do a hand up.
Yep, go ahead.
Uh, Peter, this is Stuart. I, I would just, this is a process suggestion that the point you just identified be preserved uh, by Melissa. And, and asked specifically of our planning board attorney, so it's not lost and we can get his input.
We um, our planning board attorney has went back and forth with Alec and after this meeting, we're going to have a client attorney meeting. That you guys can discuss with John, but I talked to John today on the phone and yes, it's, it's all in the works.
Okay, well, that's good. Just let's red flag the point that Peter just raised. We don't lose track of it. Thank you.
Okay, uh, so Matt, if you want to address the, the rest of their comments, please do so.
Uh, sure, thank you. Um, yes, the applicant has been following through diligently. And um, we, we do have, we, we do have some uh, comments. And um, so what I like to do is just go through my memo, this sort of the subject areas mirror exactly Barry's response to those areas. So that, that helps things. And on the proposed lots, we really have no, no real discussion. That definition uh, is fine. That, that, that's fine. On, on seeker, um, what you had said about lead agency is correct. Um, I don't think what has happened though, I don't believe the planning board has actually adopted a resolution or, or made a determination that they are. Going to be the lead agency. We know that no one has else has, has uh, responded, but that's just something whenever you're going to end up making some.
Hang on, Matt. We, we did have responses and there was a meeting where it was acknowledged that we were the lead agency.
Okay, great, great. And uh, so, so that, so that's fine. So the agency is resolved. And the only other thing on seeker is that we did make some comments on the F V A F. Uh, and uh, the applicant has made those corrections. And so um, we haven't reviewed the whole F V A F, but we know that they've uh, commented on, on the fact that they've made those corrections. So that's, that's a good step forward. Um, one of the things in the F V A F comments was a question about the archaeological. And on that, there's now been a response from, from the state cultural resource uh, uh, information survey. And uh, they pointed out uh, the uh, the resources that are related to the quarry. And um, they did say importantly that, that they're not suggesting that any further investigation be done on the site regarding archaeological resources. But they did make a comment that those resources should be identified on the pla- on the plaques and on the plans. And um, which lots are those on, Barry?
Uh, you know, to tell you the truth, Matt, I, I don't know. Our archaeologist is dealing directly with Shippo on that. And uh, we, we've done some, my surveyors have done some mapping. I haven't really followed it. But he's in the process of getting a complete sign off from them. And at that point, we will have a map that we will incorporate in the subdivision.
Right, so the, so the state's comment was that those resources be identified on the plat. Uh, and, and the other thing that I would suggest is those resources are on particular lots, that those maybe could end up being portions of the conservation easement that.
I, I think some, I think a lot of them are already in that area.
Right, so, so, but, but, but.
We'll, we'll find out when we get a final sign off from them.
Correct. Well, the point I'm making is that the, the conservation uh, document, be it an area definition or de-easement. Which Judith raised a good distinction on, um, just that maybe the, uh, no disturbance of those archaeological resources maybe should be an item in that conservation. In that conservation agreement.
This is Brian, if I may. Shouldn't we find that out before we get a final sign off?
Well, well, the, the, from Shippo. So Shippo's going to identify everything and, and basically direct us what we kind of can't do. And then we'll share that with everybody.
To back up Barry, Brian, um, there's a bunch of other agencies involved with this piece of land and. Barry and his crew are working and we've gotten the reports and everything. Um, yeah, this, this directly has to do with Shippo and. We, we have the documentation, but they're in the process of working with them. And then when they get their final, they'll have the maps that will address this. That's what Barry's trying to say. I hope that clarifies that question.
Yes.
And, and the only point I was making, I'm not sure if that was, was over, we, we talked over, which is, and maybe these, one of the conservation documents to make reference those resources as well. For the pertinent lots.
Yes, we, we will include that, yes.
Of course. Uh, so on, on the conservation, I mean, that's really the most complicated issue here. Because that's what's really going to make this a great subdivision or not really a great subdivision based upon what kind of owners we have and what kinds of things they choose to try to do. With these properties, because you know, it's always up to the landowner at some point to, to enforce, to be self enforcing. Because you know, we're not going to be out inspecting everything that gets done out there. So, so the definition of that i- is important. And having referred to John Lyons is very important because you know, we, we, we think that, you know, if it's a conservation easement. The idea is you're looking for restrictions that are mitigation measures. Compliance with an existing law isn't a mitigation measure. Compliance with an existing law is just compliance with the existing law. I mean, in a way, that doesn't really even have to be in a conservation uh, uh, area definition. To be uh, in, in effect. It's in effect just by, by, by a matter of law. So you know, we as the planning consultants have done a lot, many projects in sensitive environmental areas. And the conservation uh, uh, easements really state specific things that you can't do outside of the law. They are additional protections. And so we know that there are these wetland protections on areas that are not technically Woodstock wetlands. So that's certainly something. But just as a general rule, you know, reading through the easement, you really don't see, you know, um, um, overt or, or distinct prohibitions against. Uh, against grading or changing the contours. Um, or um, tree, well, there is tree removal discussion, uh, but it's um, uh, it's that tree removal will be allowed, but up to a certain level. You know, leaving certain number of trees per acre and, and, and only trees of a certain size. But we think that there are certain areas of environmental protection for this site that need to be explicitly stated in this. And that would be something that I'd really want to run by with John because you know, the planning board has opinions on this matter. But the overall thing is that a, a, a conservation easement is not telling owners they have to comply with the law. It's telling them they have to do more to really protect this area because of its sensitivity. And that's just a matter that's a decision for the planning board in terms of what lengths they want to go to, to make sure this is one of the greatest subdivisions ever. And it's on the way to being that way, but this conservation uh, document could be tightened up and, and referring you to the John Lyons is of course the best step to do that.
I, I spoke to John Lyons today. Sorry, Alec, I'll let you talk one second. And he had an email out to you and didn't get a response. And that was a week or two ago. He had one question for you.
Okay.
Just, just get in touch with John. Alec, you're up.
All right, thanks. So just to uh, springboard off of what Matt was saying, I just want to clarify one thing. Um, forty-eight point thirty-one acres of what we are proposing to put into conservation and subject to the town's uh, strict. Wetland and water course restrictions is essentially unconstrained land. Um, it's outside of the wetland and the wetland buffer. So um, with all due respect, I think we are going above beyond what is required by law because we are proposing to put nearly fifty acres under conservation. Um, and that will be strictly controlled. And of course, um, if you want to explicit call out for grading or something like that, we're of course willing to, to add that in. But um, I do think we are, um, to Matt's point, are actually going above what's more than just required by law.
Question.
Thanks.
Question. I'm getting a little confused by the language here.
Yep.
Alec, are you saying that the owners are proposing to put the same kinds of restrictions on the rest of the land? That the town wetland and water course law puts on the wetlands and water course and their buffers?
Yeah, because basically what the town wetland law says is you're not allowed to harvest or clear any trees or build any structures. That's, that's the spirit and intent of it.
Okay. Again, in what Matt said, there's this confusion about whether it's a conservation easement or a conservation area or agreement or management. And to say it's going to have the same limitations that the town law puts on wetlands and water courses and their buffers is a specific statement. And it's not something that automatically could be assumed.
Sure, no, I understand. And, and that's why I'm trying to just uh, clarify that.
Okay, I just wanted to be sure that was indeed what you were saying.
Yep, and, and.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to add too, I mean, there's a total of a hundred and one acres that we're going to restrict. Um, that, that on this whole parcel here from um, any disturbance or grading, the same restrictions that the town applies to the wetland area. Which is, you know, it's, it's, it's almost doubling the area that we're restricting. We're going to put those same restrictions on it. Now, the legal mechanism, how that happens, I leave that up to the lawyers.
Right, but that was the clarification that I was trying to, to, to get to. It isn't, it isn't the wetlands and water course law, but it's the same restrictions that those laws have added to a significantly larger amount of property.
Yes, to non-wetlands areas. And, and what we're proposing is basically it's, it's a declaration. Um, it's something that'll be noted on the plat. So it's a, this document will be filed in the county. Um, it'll be referenced in each successive deed. So it's not a conservation easement because that requires um, a third party to hold it and they're challenging to set up sometimes.
That's why I keep raising this. It's a different thing.
And, and, and I'll, I'll tell you, you know, the reason why we did that is because a lot of those areas would require um, wetland disturbance to get to them. So we basically said, hey, these land areas, even though they're buildable, you know, they're not really accessible without some disturbance, so let's just protect them all.
That's the issue I raised when you first came to the board, Barry.
Yeah.
That you were telling people they couldn't use it for anything.
Yep, that's right.
No, I do have one other question. I do have one other question. It's about the lot line change. Is the property that's being transferred to Woody Mack then go, Woodsy Mack then going under their forest management agreement?
I, I, you know, I'll let the attorney answer that. I, I, I know it's going to be restricted from any development and I'm not sure what they have now. Maybe Alec, do you know?
Yeah, I, I, well, this land they don't own right now, so there is no four ADA on it.
Right.
And the way the restriction we have drafted now is, is it prohibits timber, timber harvesting, so.
Okay.
Right, which is different than just incidental tree cutting, but yes, that's. So the second, the, the next area under restrictions, uh, there's A, which is the regulated activities. And we're a little bit concerned about B, the non-regulated activities. Because this is going to be in the hands of homeowners. And so this long list of, of non-regulated activities. You know, without reading, certainly Barry would know and certainly we and the planning board members would know, that there's a distinction, a clear distinction between those regulated activities and these non-regulated activities. But to the homeowners, we're concerned that this long list of non-regulated activities, which includes a lot of things that, that sort of look and sound like the kinds of things that are prohibited. Is something that's not really going to be clear to the homeowners. So I'm not sure how the best way is to, to define that. But to, to try to define it in a way where compliance is more, or more, more, more evident. Because once you start what you think is a non-regulated activity, at some point can be converted by virtue of the quantity you're moving or the size of the structure. Or by virtue of other things into all of a sudden a, a regulated activity. So I'm not sure how to structure that yet, but that'll be something I want to talk about with John and of course, Melissa, if that was my, if that was his question to me, then we'll, we'll, we'll get into that when we get, get back to him after this meeting. But so this, this issue of non-regulated activities is something that we want to, 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 to jump into a little bit. Because you, people stray, you know, in terms of, you know, uh, where they go and what they do. And, and once there's nobody around and they are on their own lot, you know, they, uh, it can be more, uh, more problematic in terms of, of, of. Making sure that these protections are in place and, and enforced. Because who, who would normally be measuring the amounts of disturbance that are allowed in non-regulated activities? It's, they're not going to the town to do that because they're not going to the town for a permit. So how is, how are those quantities and how are those dimensions actually being um, um, enforced? Or how, how is a homeowner going to know about them if it's someone who does, is not familiar with some of these, these restrictions or, or whatever? They're relying on contractors who are being retained to do the work. You know, contractors sometimes are, can be more or less. Um, specifically attuned to compliance with certain kinds of regulations. So that's just something I want to bring to everyone's attention and, and make a point of discussion with John to see that there aren't any. Not necessarily loopholes, but more like blind spots uh, in, in, in those non-regulated activities. And um. I don't really have too much more to say in that because you know, it's. I don't really have too much more to say in that because you know, it's, the intent of it is, is, is real and the, uh, uh, um, effort to, to, to follow through on it is real. And so let's just, um, really leave it, leave it as that on that subject. And let me not make, make this a long song and dance, but just get to a couple of the others, other items on other subjects that, that, that I have. Uh, and that is that on, on the natural resources, you know, we raised some issues that, that we know are, you know, this is not a, um, for all of the wetlands, the, the issues of endangered species and, 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 uh, and, and, and sensitive habitats are not that extensive. And, um, uh, and we know that, um, Mike Newicki, the consultant to the applicant has done an updated report, which we have not reviewed. But, but we will do that. But with, but that's certainly not a showstopper. It's probably more a matter of crossing, you know, diving T's and crossing I's. Uh, that some of my council members used to say. Uh, but, um, so, so that we don't really need to spend any more time on that. And then, um, uh, the answer, you know, when we had talked about, you know, we said in our memo that, you know, in our mind, the, the best mitigation measure would be to move the road closer to the homes and, you know, extend the buffer area. Well, Barry's response on that is, you know, makes, makes sense that, that if that area, uh, between the, uh, the wetland buffer boundary and the homes is really not a highly sensitive area, like in terms of rubble. And, and we have not examined the site to determine that, but for the, for the moment, accepting that description. Uh, that, that rubble area is not really, it has value in terms of protecting the buffer, but it has it whether it's considered part of the buffer or not, because it's just lands that are, 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 are rough, uh, are stony. And so that explanation is a decent explanation and, and, uh, and, and we're ready to, 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 to accept that. Uh, the other, the other thing is that, uh, uh, is the open development area. And you know, we raised that only because it's a matter of how the town law and, uh, uh, reads on open development areas. And we knew that one of the early comments from the, uh, attorneys to the applicant raised that as a point. Uh, I acknowledge that there's something to that issue that really has to sort of be resolved and not resolved by me, uh, but really by the attorneys. Because there is a provision in the open development area which requires that lots have access to a public road. But there is a section of that which provides for access by alternate means, such as rights of way, such as private roads. And it applies and doesn't apply in different situations and, uh, and has been ruled on in different, uh, decisions about that. So that's really another matter for John and the applicant's attorney to sort of really, really delve into. But I, I view that as, as an open issue and really more than anything, just, you know, identifying it as a checklist for Melissa to keep on the, uh, the, uh, you know, the open items list. And, um, uh, the other open items that, you know, they've, they've made progress on, it's been referred to the fire department. Uh, and I think the fire department would have something to say about our comment on the turnaround capability for the, um, uh, the two private roads, um, where, where the engineer Medenbach is saying that, that there don't, it isn't the need for turnarounds or hammerheads after there is turnaround capability. But that'll be something for either the fire department or the highway superintendent to, to come on, comment on. But as I understand it, that's still technically an open issue. Uh, the planning board engineer may be wanting to opine on the, um, open development area issue and also the turnaround issue. Um, uh, so we were thinking there still was going to be a referral to the planning board engineer on this, but that's up, up, up to the board to decide. We already talked about the, the planning, the, the attorney. Health department, there's progress on ship, but we are, we already talked about. And, um, uh, the other two issues that we had in our memo, which I, I haven't really heard addressed specifically, um, are, um, a- along the, um, uh, along the edge where the subdivision regulations talk about a, uh, uh, tree plantings. And the applicant says that because of the natural woodding, uh, that isn't really necessary. And so that's, that's just, we don't have an opinion on that. That's just a matter for the planning board to decide. Uh, but that's something that needs to be decided, you know, whether there could be a waiver on the, the, the tree planting component of the, uh, of the subdivision twenty-nine F, which is the section that talks about tree planting. So that's, you know, the applicant certainly free to discuss that. And maybe, I don't know if there's, there's the new Wiki report, maybe in, address anything about the extensiveness of the, of the forest cover along that, that property line that would, um, address that question at all?
Um, he talks just a little bit about the, the fact that the road is, uh, is on a ridge. And we're going to have drainage, you know, and that for habitat, there'll be natural channels for them to, to go through. And we have some habitat crossings. So that them crossing the road, you know, that's why he didn't get so much into the trees, but is the habitat ability. But I might want to point out to you that we are proposing with the beginning of the road, um, comes through an area that is kind of an open field. And we are proposing trees planted along that, um, on the one side. And then the rest of the road is going through a wooded area where we're clearing just the minimum amount. So you're going to have trees at the boundary of where you would want to plant trees.
Right. So I, to, to really close the door on this issue, I would think that, uh, in your next submission, just having a few paragraphs that specifically address the requirements of two oh two twenty-nine F and why you think that the, the, the plan and its existing condition, including the trees you just mentioned that are being planted, satisfies those requirements. And so just to pay attention to compliance with that, with that subdivision reg, and then the planning board can check that, check that off. Uh, and then the other thing is that there, has there been a resolution, Melissa, I may have missed it on the, um, uh, the recreation reservation and, and the fee for that? Uh, or is that still an open, uh, decision of the planning board?
We wouldn't create a resolution with all those details until we were ready to hold a public hearing, Matt.
Okay. Well, it's just a matter of whether or not that decision's been made in terms of whether there'll be a recreation fee or whether there'll be whether the conservation areas in some way or other fulfill that, that set aside requirement.
Matt, the thing, Matt, the thing is that, uh, the, the recreation area has to be open to the public. And, and so that wouldn't work in the conservation area.
Right. So let them address, so if they don't want to pay the money, let them try to address it in some other way. But that, I'm just listing that as an open, as an open item, Melissa, at all.
Yes.
That's really all, that's really all we have, that's really all, all we have. We will look at the new Wiki report. Um, we will look at the, um, the revised FEAF just to see that, you know, those additions are, are, are properly addressed. And, um, and we haven't reviewed the, the part two of the, uh, FEAF because that's certainly something that occurs usually a little bit later in secret. After all of the board's questions have been answered. But that's really all I have at this point.
I just had one question for Barry regarding the road maintenance agreement. I see you, there was a legal word you had for it, but, uh, it means that the property owners are going to have a contribute to a fund that there's going to be, uh, somebody that will maintain the roads.
Yeah, maybe Alec can comment on it, but I believe they're going to do a filing with the state to, you know, kind of bind all of those homeowners to participate in some kind of a, an agreement. Maybe Alec, you can comment on that, that, that we're using?
Yeah, certainly. It's, it's basically just that. It's a de minimis homeowners association. I just call it de minimis because the only interest that the homeowners association will be regulating, um, is just maintenance and upkeep of the roadway. Um, and things like the adjacent swales and water quality basins.
And, and do they contract someone to, to do the maintenance of the road? Is it, yeah, okay.
Yep. Yep. So they, they'll hire someone to plow it every year to, you know, fill in a hole that in winter for the gravel.
And, and, and the homeowners will be forced legally to pay into it.
Yeah.
Right. I mean, it's not like somebody could just bow out and says, I'm not going to pay it. They're going to be all forced to contribute.
Yeah.
This is almost like a tax, right?
Yeah. And it's regulated by the AG's office. So what this requires is for us to file a certain form with information to them. Um, and I'm sure your attorney will want to review that, those documents and, because that's pretty standard. So we'll, we'll also be looking at that.
Stuart has his hand up here. Uh, Stuart?
Yeah, I think they just addressed the question I have is I wanted to, what's the mechanism by which, uh, someone who buys a parcel on this, in this subdivision would actually be obligated to join that de minimis association? Could anyone buy a parcel and not join it?
No, by, by purchase in a parcel, you're also buying into the HOA.
And the AG enforces that?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, I would just ask, I, I would just ask Alec, have you, have you thought, um, uh, something to say about the open development area applicability or not? Or is that something you just want to, anything you want to share with the board about that? Or want to talk to John Lyons first about that?
So me and, me and John have exchanged emails, um, and I believe he agrees with my position. I was just waiting for him to tell the board that.
Great.
Any other board members have questions for Barry?
Correct, Alec. Correct.
Judy has her hand up.
Yeah, I want to understand the management of the conservation lands. By moving the property over to Woodsy Mack that you are, that was the no development sect, section. So that takes care of management of that. It becomes Woodsy Mack's problem, correct?
Uh, yeah, yeah. Well, it'd be subject to the same restrictions, but they would own it. So.
But they would own it. And every other parcel is going to be owned by the homeowner who bought that lot. So they're going to be required by whatever mechanism to maintain the conservation status.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. And that, and that's something that can be done through the HOA, the homeowners association. And homeowners associations, they have a fiduciary duty, which is pretty significant to enforce anything that, uh, was it, is within their purview.
Would that be required if they join the HOA, they have to buy into the conservation rules?
Yes, everything else. Yeah, just like buying into a lot where you have to buy in and contribute to the road maintenance. It's the same thing with the conservation areas and the, and the HOA that will be formed and will have that fiduciary duty to enforce those restrictions, which I think is a pretty strong restriction.
Thank you. That's what I wanted to know.
Any other members of the board have questions for the applicants?
Yep. Peter, I have one more question. The, the, to Alec, the fiduciary duty that you just mentioned would be owed by the HOA. Who is it owed to?
Well, it's a, it's a, so if there's a conservation restriction that they have to manage, that means that they have to enforce those provisions. So if they see a lot owner violating it in some way, um, just like any HOA, the process, just speaking in general terms is that, um, they send them like a cease and desist letter so that they stop. And if there's some, I mean, this is all will be worked out in the HOA documents, but then they may have to pay a fine. They might have to fix whatever they did that wasn't supposed to be done. Um, there's, there's options.
But who are the beneficiaries of the fiduciary duty? Would it be the town or?
Uh, the
Just trying to just get my head around.
I mean, I guess it's
It would be all the lot owners.
Yeah, yeah. It's the other lot owners. I mean, the, the, the significance of a fiduciary duty is that, um, the HOA, if they receive a complaint or something like that, can't just ignore it. They, they do have to act on it.
But is that something that, uh, someone who's not an owner could enforce, such as a town person or the town itself? Or is that left up to enforcement by, uh, by other owners?
Well, I mean, that's, that's a good question. And I, I think there is, um, equally good of an argument to be made that the towns approving a specific plan. So the building inspector has the same zoning enforcement options as you would with any other kind of plan that comes before the planning board too.
I mean, that's, that's, it's obviously a legal question. Like to ask John Lyons that question too. Maybe you can
In the event of the neighbor observing, you know, so the, the agreement is a little bit less de minimis than just the road.
Yeah.
It's road and environmental, which
I can't hear you, Matt.
I'm sorry.
I lost sound.
No, I heard you.
Oh, so, um, it's a little bit less de minimis than just the road. What I was getting at, it, in terms of a homeowner observing something that could be a, a not consistent with the requirements of the conservation area, could there be a requirement that they notify the town of that? Because that, that, that may be what, what Stuart is getting at. It's like, what is the enforcement of that? If they just talk to the other homeowners, that's one thing. But they're not going to get a lynching mob up, you know, to stop it. So maybe, maybe they have to report it to the zoning enforcement officer.
Um, yeah. So I, I have to admit, when I don't know what I don't know, we don't do HOAs, but we do this enough before planning boards, I can speak about it generally. So I'll, I'll just have to check with our HOA council kind of on what, what the options are and, and we'll certainly work through it.
Thank you.
Matt, you had some other comment?
No, no, that, that completed what I had.
Matt, planning board, we are going to set up a client attorney meeting. So all of your questions that you had tonight, you will be able to ask John who's on board. We will do that as a Zoom call. We're going to discuss schedules. Will be directed at John, but I spoke to him and been in touch all along. So.
Yeah, I, I have a couple of comments if it's appropriate.
Absolutely, I say, but Peter.
Okay. Well, number one is I, I just want to point out that I did meet with the fire chief and reviewed the plan and he, he seems to be very happy with it. And is going to be sending a memo to the planning board. Um, the other thing I just have, you know, some questions on procedure. I know, um, almo- almost a year ago, we had a, a referral to the county planning board and I didn't know if we need to renew that. Because there's been a change of plan. We need the Ulster County Planning Board to review the project. And then secondly, whether we're in a position where we can schedule a public hearing.
Well, uh, Matt probably better to answer that, but I truthfully, if we've changed the plan somewhat, then I guess we got to go back to the county because we have to give them the latest plan. Unless Matt thinks, um, that it's so minor or I, I don't know.
I don't know.
Well, I, I'd like to finish just reviewing the, uh, the documents that have been resubmitted and just make sure they're all fine. But, um, and confer about that question. Um, what would, what, so since, so since that time, what, how would you summarize the changes in the plans?
We dropped two building lots.
Number of lots.
That's pretty much it. We dropped two building lots.
Well, also you added all of that conservation concern.
Well, technically we had that in there. I just don't think it was crystal clear.
Well, we didn't have it. Hi, I'm Jonah, by the way. I'm part of one of the representative lawmakers. Uh, to, uh, to this point, we added the a hundred acres of conservation restriction into the, uh, plan.
That's fairly major and appreciated.
And, and that was a comment from county previously as they were suggesting something like this. So it might
Right.
Be helpful.
Yeah, I've, I've never, I didn't even think about submitting again to Ulster County Planning Board. We, you know, they had addressed, I'm, I'm being honest. Um, but Matt would be that call if we need to do that again, that, that's fine. Um, I don't know. I feel like we have a case, we work through it. And then when I have the final resolution, I send that to the county. But again, if this is Matt's call, I don't know if this really grants another Ulster County Planning Board review. The review was pretty straightforward and gave us what we kind of needed from them at that point. And that was over a year ago, Barry. Um, but Matt, that you tell me there.
Right. Well, you know, generally if changes are either addressing comments in the Ulster County Planning Board review or are improvements and more protective of the environment, that you don't really, thank you submitting to the county for them to what? Tell you to do a good job? Uh, if you want to hear that, you can, you can do that. But other than that, I'm not sure that it is necessary, but I'll just double check that.
Thank you. And Barry, to answer your public hearing, I just, I think one more set of plans. I know, um, just a few more things, the, the fire department and that, we're getting close. Does that answer your question?
All right. So you're not ready at this meeting?
No.
Yeah.
Okay. Anybody else have a comment regarding this case? Melissa, you're going to, uh, set up, as you just said, a meeting with the attorney so we can sort a couple of those things out and then get it back.
Barry's going to continue to work and solidify that, that, that map, A, that, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right then.
Sound good?
Okay. Very good. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Okay. So, so, um, so will we automatically come back to the next meeting? Matt, you'll have a time to review what we submitted and for the next meeting?
Definitely.
Okay. What, what, Melissa, do you know the date of that?
Wait, 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 wait. What? You want to come back?
When do we come back before the planning board, assuming Matt has done a review of what we submitted and have a formal response?
Oh, well, that would, whenever Matt does his review. Sorry. Barry, I'm scheduled through the, the beginning of November right now.
I know. That's why I want to get on the agenda before you push yourself to December.
Stuart had his hand up there a second.
Yeah, just one more question.
Matt, when can you give them a review of what they submitted? You tell me a time because my time didn't work so well last time.
A week or two.
All right, Barry, I'll do what I can.
All right.
So you have that, I'll schedule it. Stuart?
Yeah, just one, the last question. I noticed on the, on the agenda, Fred Meyer of McBane Associates is listed as one of the representatives. Uh, I'd just like to know what McBane Associate, who they are and what their connection to the project is.
Melissa?
Jonah, can you respond?
Hi, we can respond. Um, Fred Meyer, who's on the call right now, but I don't know if his microphone is working. There he is. Um, he is actually her brother and my uncle and McBane Associates. Fred, do you want to take over and say what your credentials are and how you relate to the project?
Basically, I will just say that, um, I get a chance to move to Woodstock and be close to my family. Um, McBane Associates is my current, uh, employer. And I'm an environmental engineer and I do, I basically do river restoration work and highly manipulated systems. in highly manipulated systems.
Wow. Thank you. And is that the business of McBane as well?
That's the business of McBane Associates. Yeah, we're, we're a bunch of, uh, biologists and engineers and ecologists. And you can go on and on, people that love rocks, people that love trees. And then we work together to try to develop a, an ecological restoration solution for very impaired systems.
Thank you very much.
And, and I might want to point out, Jonah, I think it was clear, but Fred is going to build a house in the subdivision.
Yes. That's why we're building the subdivision.
Okay, very good. All right, everybody.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
And we're going to move on to some unfinished business.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you, Matt. Yes, thank you. So, uh, this one I'll address to Stuart is the zoning amendment, cell towers, antennas and wireless. How do we stand on that?
You're, you're muted, Matt. Stuart?
Yeah, Stuart here. You could call me Matt. You can call me Ray.
I've been, I've been doing that to people recently.
Wasn't there a commercial years ago, you can call me Ray, you know? I don't have a firm answer yet, quite honestly. My son got married in Labor Day and I haven't had a chance to sit down with the, uh, zoning amendments on the cell tower to wade through it. I think the last conversation we had, um, uh, was whether we might be able to have our attorney sit with us on, on, to review it. And I know there was some correspondence with the supervisor as to why would we need, uh, why would the town need to pay for a second attorney? And that raises the old issue again of, well, why can't we have access to our attorney? And that's kind of where I left it when I got diverted to my personal life for the last two weeks. So, yeah, I don't really have, have a, a global, uh, review prepared of, of the ordinance. And it's a telecom ordinance, uh, changes and, you know, they're really fairly intricate to me, so.
Stuart, you can get back to me, but my thought was to counteract like I did last time and ask if we could meet with Campanelli. But that's all up to you guys, tell me what you want to do. Hey, they're already paying him, let them pay him, mortise it with us.
I don't have a problem with that. I mean, I have a couple of questions I would want to ask him if we have access. But I, I'm not prepared to, to provide, uh, a, a legal review of, of the statutes. I'd like to hear from the person who wrote them.
All right, I can, I will work on that if the planning board sounds that they're good on that. I will approach a meeting with Campanelli and us. Good?
Is that acceptable to the board? Acceptable to me.
Lots of nods. Okay, I'm on that.
Okay. Uh, the next issue is the site visit update for Hale Mountain Road Lot Line Revision. And I did that today and I walked the new lot line and everything looks fine. So I'll write a report and send it in.
I will schedule a public hearing.
And the next thing is to make a motion, if we could, to please release the performance bond in the Highwood Sportsman's Club. Again, I did the, uh, site visit yesterday. It was, I mean, they did a beautiful job. The landing was absolutely clean as a whistle. In fact, they even put new gravel down. If, if you didn't even know anything happened. There was, you know, one of the logging trucks was sitting there and the skidder was up on the skid road, but everything looked really clean. So, um, if we could, uh, make a motion to release the performance bond?
They'll move it.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Guys, I have one more thing. One more thing, Peter.
One more thing.
Woodsy Mack, uh, with all of this and, and the neighbors, I, we need, we need a crew then if we're going to go back up. So email me later next week. We should set up for an extensive site visit with the planning board. Maybe let the neighbors know, think about that, and I can work on that next week also. And maybe Anthony too, the, the lawyer. Okay? So just think about that and who would like to go because we kind of need a few people, not just one.
I wish I could.
I know, Judy, I know. I appreciate everything you do for us, Judy and John. I don't ask you to, you guys to do this.
Okay, also, uh, we have a reminder that our next meeting, which is the workshop meeting, will start at six o'clock, which is the next meeting.
Still on Zoom, correct?
Uh, sure. I'll let you know. I think so.
That we have a public hearing on the cell case, right? At the head of that meeting?
Yes.
Six o'clock and then, yeah.
Turn into a workshop. Yes.
Okay. Thanks for the reminder, Peter.
Six PM and I will, I will try to shoot you a reminder. I am not in the office tomorrow. I'm headed to Saratoga for that wireless forum. Um, but I will be back next week, so.
Okay, any other members of the board have any questions or issues before we do an adjournment?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Have a good evening, everybody.
Night, everyone.
Take care.
Brian, thank you. He hung up. Thanks, guys.
Good night.
Good night, John. Talk to you next week.